Good afternoon, and thank you for joining us for this candidate forum hosted by Aging Action Initiative. This forum is the first in a series of three that will focus on issues and concerns related to older adults in Marin County. This forum is being livestreamed on YouTube for public viewing. I'm Sybil Butilier, Chair of Age Friendly Sausalito, a member of Sausalito Village, and I serve as our city's representative on the Marin County Commission on Aging, all community partners with Aging Action Initiative's candidate forum in Southern Marin. I'd like to specifically acknowledge our community outreach partners, Sausalito Village, Marin Villages, the Marin County Commission on Aging, and Marin Age Friendly. Thank you. AAI, Marin's Aging Action Initiative, is a collaborative network of over 280 community-based organizations, public agencies, and healthcare professionals working together for the well-being of older people in Marin. AAI offers educational programs for frontline professionals and innovative detect-and-connect mental health and dementia training and anti-ageist advocacy opportunities. This afternoon's forum is being moderated by the League of Women Voters of Marin County. This year, the League has been celebrating 100 years of following a mission to empower voters and defend democracy. Moderating candidate forums is an important part of their vision of a democracy where every citizen has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. The League is a strictly nonpartisan organization and never supports or opposes individual candidates or political parties. And now I hand you over to our moderator, League member Nancy Bell.
Hello. My name is Nancy Bell, a member of the League of Women Voters of Marin County and your moderator for this afternoon's forum. Thank you for joining us this afternoon for this special topic-focused forum featuring candidates from two city council races, Sausalito and Belvedere. Thank you to Aging Action Initiative for inviting the League to host this event. We are honored to be here. Slide one, please. And again, thank you to the community outreach partners who have helped spread the word about this event, Marin Villages, Sausalito Village, Marin County Commission on Aging, and Age Friendly Marin. Slide two, please. With me are League members Robin Dietrich as Timekeeper, and off-screen, we have Anne Wakeley and DeeDee Buttery for Zoom support, along with the team at the Community Media Center of Marin. Thank you. The League is a trusted membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. In addition to promoting voter education, the League participates in advocacy for issues and may take positions on issues that arise in ballot measures. I would like to remind everyone that the candidates have all agreed to participate under ground rules set forth for this forum. In order to ensure impartiality, it is the League's policy that candidate forum team members not live in the voting jurisdiction the candidates represent, nor can they be actively involved in the candidate's campaign. Through our partnership with Community Media Center of Marin, this forum is being livestreamed on the League's YouTube channel. This event is also being recorded and will be available on our website at MarinLJV.org. For broader community access to Gavel to Gavel production will be rebroadcast on CMCMTV's Channel 30. Days and times will be posted on the League's website. I would like to briefly explain the roles of the Timekeeper and the Question sorter. To ensure the candidates stay within the allotted time, they will see a box designated clock. At the appropriate time, the box will turn yellow for approximately 10 seconds, indicating the candidate has 30 seconds remaining for their response. The box will then go black. When the box turns red, the candidate should complete the sentence they are on. Tonight's questions will focus on issues and concerns related to older adults in Marin County and the Belvedere and Sausalito communities. Slide three, please. There are six candidates running for three seats on the Sausalito City Council. All of the candidates are with us today. Melissa Blaustein, Joan Cox, Janelle Kelman, Erin Singer, Ian Sobieski, and Vicki Nichols. There are four candidates running for three seats on the Belvedere City Council. Again, all are with us today. Nancy Chemnitzer, James Lynch, Steve Block, and Chelsea Schlunt. Thank you. The candidates have been invited to make a one-minute opening statement. After that, the candidates will each have 60 seconds to answer each question. To be fair, I will rotate the order in which they respond to the questions. For opening statements, we will begin with Melissa from Sausalito.
Thank you very much. And before I jump in, I really want to acknowledge all the families impacted by the glass fire and thank our first responders, in particular, the Southern Marin Fire Department, that are there protecting those families. I think it's so impactful that you chose to host this forum today on the UN International Day of Elder People. You know, by the year 2050, one in four adults in North America is going to be over the age of 65. And I said "North America," and I know that's on a lot of people's minds right now because everyone is watching the national election. But it's actually at the local level where you can have the most impact and determine what your everyday quality of life will look like. That's why now, more than ever, it's critical to elect city council candidates who will stand up for age-friendly values in our communities. I'm proud to serve on the Rotary Senior Housing Board, and for every week since the pandemic begun, I've been delivering meals to our seniors. I also serve as Vice Chair of the Sustainability Commission in Sausalito, and I'm a proud member of the Chamber of Commerce Board. My name is Melissa Blaustein. I'm a candidate for city council in Sausalito, and I ask for your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Melissa. Joan is joining us on the phone. So Joan from Sausalito, why don't you give us your opening statement?
Thank you so much. My name is Joan Cox, and I'm the only incumbent running for reelection to the city council. I have served on the city council for the last four years, and prior to that, I served for eight years on Sausalito's Planning Commission. And in both roles, I got to meet many of Sausalito's seniors. By the way, Marin County is a county that has some of the highest median-aged folks in California, and Sausalito is one of the cities with the highest-aged folks in Marin County. So looking after our seniors is definitely a priority. It has been for the council for some time. I'm proud to say we were the first city in Marin to achieve World Health Organization status. We also, in Sausalito, are a model for how complex issues need to get resolved at the regional level. I am proud that as a planning commissioner and a city council person, we adopted home adaptation fee waivers and a streamlining process to enable seniors to put elevators in their homes and to implement other measures to aid accessibility.
Thank you, Joan.
I'm Joan Cox. Thank you for your vote.
I forgot that Joan can't see the time clock, so I will remember next time. Okay, Janelle from Sausalito, your opening statement.
Pardon me. Hello, everybody, and thank you. My name is Janelle Kelman, and I've lived in Sausalito for the last two decades. For 10 years, I've served on the Sausalito Planning Commission, now as the Chair, and recently, I served on two General Plan Update Committees. I believe this is one of the most important elections of our lifetime, and I want to be of service. We have to work together now. I'm running for Sausalito City Council to work on five outcomes that residents have told me they want now: a disaster preparedness plan, a future where Sausalito is a climate change leader, diversity and racial equity in our housing, jobs, and schools, robust community programs and housing for our seniors, and a more diverse and sustainable tax base for our post-COVID economic recovery. I'm so concerned about providing for our seniors that last week, I released a 10-question survey about housing and services for older adults in Sausalito so that I have more information to help craft sustainable solutions. My experience as the Planning Commissioner, an entrepreneur, and environmental attorney have taught me the importance of listening to people first and then taking action together. I have several endorsements, including the California Democratic Party, the North Bay Labor Council, Marin County Young Democrats, and the Sarah Club. I'd be honored to have your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Erin from Sausalito.
Hi, and thank you for this fantastic event. Appreciate it very much. I'm Erin Singer, running for city council here in Sausalito. A lot of you may know me as the seaplane guy. I'm the owner of Seaplane Adventures at the north end of town here, but I've started, built, and grown several businesses here in Sausalito since I moved here in 1994. I've also been involved in the community for the past 25 years, including being Chair of Sausalito Chamber of Commerce, twice Chair of the Business Advisory Committee, and I am a current board member of the Marin City Community Development Corporation. We're facing a lot of challenges right now, including seeing more than 32% of our small businesses shutter during this COVID-19 crisis. We also have a need for senior housing and other issues that affect our older population, and that's where I'll be focusing on.
Ian.
Hello, my name is Ian Sobieski. I'm running for city council in Sausalito. When I bought my house in 2011, I came to know that -- discover what you all know, Sausalito is a gem, and I love it. I want to compliment Joan Cox and the other current city council members who have done so much to move our town forward over the last several years. I think they and all of us know there are ways that Sausalito could still be better, and that was before the COVID crisis hit. Now, we face a dramatic impact to our businesses as well as to our budget, and it's for those reasons I decided to serve. A bit on my background, I came out here to get a PhD. I got sidetracked in the business, and for 23 years, I've been advising startup companies. I've helped more than 100 get started and succeed. I've also been on the board of Meals on Wheels of San Francisco for six years, a complex organization that served 3 million meals last year. I can bring my financial acumen, my creativity, and my ability to collaborate with others to help solve Sausalito's problems and move us forward. I'm looking forward to the challenge, and I hope you'll lead me to the team. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. Vicki, you're next.
Yes, hello, and thanks to the League for your opportunity to speak today. I always appreciate your ethics and the well-run manner that you do these events. I'm Vicki Nichols, a 39-year resident in Sausalito, and I've been participating in city government for about 20 years, volunteering often on boards and commissions. For the past six-plus years, I've been on the Planning Commission and currently, it's just the Chair before Chair Kelman. So I've been working on the general plan as well. Housing is one of my three issues, so I'm happy to talk about that, and I want to talk about budget recovery, housing, and hopefully, if elected, I'll be able to participate with Belvedere on how we handle the sea level rise issue. So that's coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from the candidates from Belvedere, starting with Nancy.
Thank you. I'm Nancy Chemnitzer. I'm the only incumbent running for city council in Belvedere. I'm currently mayor. I have lived in Belvedere 35 years, since 1986. My husband Brian and I raised our children here, and now my grandchildren live here as well. Belvedere is home to three generations of our family. At age 68, I am the only senior candidate. A practicing attorney for 39 years, I focused on consumer litigation and have represented thousands of seniors. I'm a national speaker on financial abuse of the elderly. I've experienced in Belvedere on Planning Commission and committees, almost every committee in town. My priorities include keeping our residents safe in these challenging times, preserving the physical beauty and character of this place. Every issue facing our city has an overlay relevant to our senior population, and that is a strong reason. I am running for a second term on city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy. Jim, you're next.
Good afternoon. I'm Jim Lynch, and thank you to the League for hosting this important forum. I'm running for city council in Belvedere because I want to continue serving this community that I cherish and that has been home for the last 20 years. I'm a retired lawyer from the global law firm Latham &amp; Watkins, and I've served Belvedere as a volunteer on the Planning Commission since 2014, including terms as Vice Chair and Chair. I presently chair our committee to protect the seawalls and utilities from sea level rise and earthquake. I also serve as the president of the Board of Directors of the Redwoods, the nonprofit community, senior living community in Mill Valley. I understand the many needs of our growing senior community in Belvedere and throughout Marin, and I look forward to helping serve and enhance the lives of everyone in our community. Thank you. I would appreciate your vote, and I look forward to this discussion.
Thank you, Jim. Chelsea. Steve, sorry, Steve's next.
Good afternoon. I'm Steve Block. I'm running for city council in the city of Belvedere. So I'm 58. I'm not quite a member of the older community here in Marin, but I'm certainly knocking on the door. I also haven't had the experience of being a caregiver for an older parent, like so many daughters mostly have. And so I'm looking forward to participating in this forum, but mostly to listen to what those who've been working in this area longer and with more diligence than I have have to say about these issues. My background is I was a CEO of a company. I'm an attorney with an active law license, and for the last three years, I've served on the Marin County Pension Board. My family has a long history of public service, and I think that these attributes will serve the city well as we address the challenges and opportunities that we have in the future. You can learn more about our campaign at steveblockforbelvedere.org, and I look forward to taking your questions.
Thank you, Steve. And Chelsea, you'll be the final candidate to do an opening statement.
All right. Well, thank you all for being here tonight. I'm grateful to the League of Women Voters as well as the Agent Action Initiative for arranging this forum. I'm grateful to speak to the issues that matter, not just to the senior citizens of Marin, but to Belvedere and Sausalito. My name is Chelsea Schlunt. I'm a full-time working mom with three little kids, and I'm very active in our community, specifically with the elderly through the Little Brothers Friends of the Elderly, where I have a weekly call with my elder Dora to make sure she's doing well while she's sheltered during COVID. I also work with The Ranch, which has a ton of local programs. My whole campaign is about bringing a voice to those who feel unheard, ensuring that our council members serve everybody in the community. And while I might not yet mirror our senior citizen demographic, I will one day. In preparation for this forum, I spent a lot of time speaking to the citizens of Belvedere to hear what matters most to you. I want to hear how our city is meeting your needs and where we can do better. Resoundingly, I heard it's a great place to live. I promise to work with my other council members to ensure that you continue to feel safe, supported, and respected in Belvedere. Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea. And now we'll move on to the questions. We're going to start with Joan from Sausalito, who again is joining us by phone. So the first question is, what are the issues facing older adults in your jurisdiction, and how should your city council address them? Joan? Joan, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much for the question. One of the most important issues facing seniors in Sausalito, but actually throughout Marin, is affordable housing and also being able to house in place. And this is a priority for Sausalito City Council and a priority for me. So as the Chair of the General Plan Advisory Commission for the last three years, I've been assisting Sausalito in rewriting its general plan. And thanks to the efforts of Sybil Butilier, we have incorporated into the general plan a good many policies and programs that are oriented towards assisting our seniors. Beyond that, I have served on Sausalito's Housing Element Committee since 2010, and each housing element, we work to identify affordable housing. I'm also a member of Rotary, working with leaders in Rotary to identify Rotary housing for seniors, which is the top priority for us this coming year. I've identified eight sites for potential affordable housing in Sausalito, including housing for seniors, and I look forward to meeting this challenge of facilitating the ability of seniors to stay at home in Sausalito. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Sorry again. Janelle from Sausalito, you're next.
Thank you very much. There are several issues facing our older adults in Sausalito, but I want to focus on four: housing, transportation and accessibility, feelings of isolation, and disaster preparedness. Now, we spend a lot of time talking about housing, and I believe we need long-term community services and housing programs for our seniors. As I mentioned, I've worked on the general plan for the last three years, and I've actively been seeking ways to promote policies that support our senior community. Some of the ways that we can address housing and help our seniors include: aging in place, so facilitating home modifications to support seniors remaining in their homes; aging in community, allowing Sausalito residents to maintain engagement and avoid isolation; things like long-term home sharing, where you pair somebody with extra space with seniors; or even residential care facilities, which provides for aging in place in small group homes with six or fewer residents. We have some serious issues, but we have some serious opportunity to address these. I've been working diligently on accessibility, community, and disaster preparedness. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Erin from Sausalito.
Thank you. So the three top issues, I think, facing seniors in Sausalito, number one would certainly be housing and not simply affordable housing, but also assisted and assisted care housing. And as a city, we need to be looking at opportunities to create these types of housing in our town. So folks that have lived here in their own homes for many years are not forced to move out of the community. I had a good friend and had a long conversation with him about his own mother, who'd lived in her house for 25 years and needed to move to a memory-assisted care facility and had to go all the way up to Roner Park. And that's not something I think any of us would like to see here in our town. Additionally, disaster preparedness. Some of our seniors are some of the most vulnerable people here, and in the case of a rapid evacuation, we absolutely need plans to address them.
Thank you, Erin. Ian, you're next.
Thanks. So as I mentioned in my intro, I was on the board of Meals on Wheels of San Francisco for six years, and meals were an important and visible thing that we provided to our clients, but it was the wide range of other services that really were critical and helped educate me about the wide diversity of services that need to be provided to the older population to allow them to maintain dignity and respect and freedom in their older years. I think Janelle and Joan and Erin summed up well the different categories of ideas that we all agree on need to be done and are all important areas to pursue, particularly an evacuation policy that doesn't leave everybody on their own, but somehow provides assurance and resiliency that everyone will be evacuated in a crisis is important. But on issues like housing and other such things, the place I really would contribute is not so much ideas as in actually helping bridge divisions. Everyone's in favor of senior housing, and yet no one wants there to be any development in any nearby neighborhood of theirs, not in their backyard. And I would help to be able to bridge that gap with my collaborative approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicki from Sausalito.
I think I agree with all the other candidates in Sausalito that have touched on all the points actually that I had written down. I think another thing that we need to add, we keep talking about affordable housing, and we know that the formula in Marin County, since we're such a high-income area, is affordable, it prices many people out. So we're going to have to talk about low, very low, all kinds of alternatives. I hope, as elected, that housing would be my second priority, and I would initiate robust conversations. As Ian alluded to, there's a lot of tension in the community, and we're going to have to have these deep conversations to get anything done, and I would commit to doing that, and I know that's not going to be easy. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go over to Belvedere, starting again with Nancy.
Yes, my top three priorities, I think, for seniors are, number one, keeping us all healthy and alive during COVID. Belvedere is 43% vulnerable seniors. And to help with this, as mayor, I sent out seven newsletters for accurate information, resources, sense of urgency, and reassurance. We also activated our block captains, neighbor-to-neighbor, keeping in touch without touching, and our community policing. Secondly, aging in place is critical for our seniors. We're working on walkability and the eight domains of livability. Three is disaster preparedness, and we have upgraded the community center as a crisis center with now IT for better communication, an ICE machine for medical supplies, and other things that will help our seniors through a crisis.
Thank you, Nancy. Jim from Belvedere.
Thank you. In my work as the president of the board of Redwoods, I've seen the many challenges confronting our senior community and what it takes to protect our community in this COVID crisis. I knock on wood every time I say this, but we haven't had any of our 350 residents test positive for COVID, and that's an accomplishment that I'm proud of, and I understand how to preserve and extend to Belvedere. Housing is obviously a big deal. We're working on the Planning Commission, and I'll continue to work on city council on auxiliary dwelling units and working to get those units inhabited. That is, not just built, but occupied. I also understand the issues of isolation among the elderly and our seniors and how COVID has worsened that, and I understand the ways that we can treat threats through communication and outreach. We're also focused on safety, not just egress and a disaster, but protecting the pharmaceutical needs of our seniors with functional needs, including related to mobility, and also making traffic safer so we can cross the streets without risk and concern.
Thank you, Jim. Steve?
I think you missed Melissa. Do you want me to go, or do you want to?
No, it's not her turn yet.
Oh, I thought Sausalito was all going first.
No.
Okay, sorry. Just want to make sure everybody gets their chance. Yeah, no, I echo a lot of things that the other panelists from Belvedere and Sausalito have said. I've canvassed it, right, walking around and talking to folks. And when I come up to an older Belvedere person, they're actually quite glad to see me. So isolation's certainly an issue. I see it with my mom on our Zoom talks. It's really tough on these folks being alone. The other concerns are really relating to traffic safety, a big concern, public disaster preparedness. Everybody's worried about getting off of Belvedere Island. I serve on the Belvedere Block Captain Steering Committee, and we're doing a lot of work toward that end. We're going to stand up some evacuation drills in the coming weeks and refine our evacuation plan in Belvedere. And housing is also an important issue. And the ability to age in place, I think, is important to a lot of folks, especially who live on Belvedere Island.
Thank you. And Melissa, now it's your turn.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate what many of the other candidates from across the community had to say on this issue, especially it's really great to see housing come to the forefront as a priority after so many years of an unwillingness for folks to talk about it. As a member of the Rotary Senior Housing Board, we spend a lot of time just seeking sites and approval for those sites so that we can help our seniors age in place. But on that point of affordability, which many of you have brought up about Marin, I want to also stress that we need to do more and can do more to create jobs for our seniors in our community because actually, more than 50% of the seniors living in Marin County County are, in fact, still working because of the cost of living here, and there are some folks who are looking for opportunities. And I think especially in a time of a pandemic, as a member of the Chamber of Commerce, we can work to create partnerships for businesses and job opportunities for seniors to get them out of isolation and to help them with their problems around food insecurity, because prior to this pandemic, about 10% of all seniors in Marin were susceptible to food security and 25% at risk, and we can only imagine that that's gotten worse. So, I think it's really important to talk about housing and disaster preparedness critically, but I also want to bring to the forefront jobs for seniors.
Thank you. And now, we're ready for question two, and we will start with Janelle. And the question is, in a recent survey of older adults in Marin, climate change and emergency preparedness were listed as primary concerns. What do you plan to do to help older residents be ready? And again, we'll start with Janelle.
Great, thank you so much. I have already been talking with Sausalito Village, the representatives of age-friendly Sausalito, to learn more about the Sausalito Village Emergency Preparedness Clusters. I've sat in on several Southern Marin Fire Department presentations to understand what's in place, and it still feels like a few things are missing. Number one, that I'm hearing from our older adults, is where are the evacuation routes in Sausalito? Where do we go? And what do we do when we get there? One of the places most surely we will go is down to the waterfront. So, I've been reaching out to charter boat captains on the waterfront to see if they, much like during 9/11, where many of the ferry operators came to help with the rescue, will also come together to help with evacuation. I also want to focus on emergency energy sources. Right now, several private property owners do, in fact, have diesel generators. I want to know where those are, so that if you have refrigeration requirements or you have a medical device that needs to stay charged, you know exactly where to go. And the last thing I want to focus on is communication. My dad's a ham radio operator, and I want to see that back in Sausalito. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Erin?
Thank you. So, I also have been involved in several meetings over the last, really over the last year or so regarding disaster preparedness and especially wildfire emergency. We do a lot of flying, actually, at seaplane to assist cal fire. Plans are in place for evacuations through the Southern Marin Fire Department. They've done an excellent job. Sausalito Village has a database of vulnerable seniors in town. They've done, done an incredible job of working with the senior population here. The one thing that I think we could use some work on is training for our residents. The most important thing in the case of a, especially of a wildland fire here is it will, things will happen very quickly and take place very quickly, and the city needs to do a lot to help us as residents be trained to respond quickly in the case of an emergency, and I, and I have a lot of ideas on how to do that.
Thank you. And I have to apologize, I skipped Chelsea for the first question. My apologies. Where is she? Chelsea, are you there? There you are. Chelsea, sorry, I missed you on that first question. Can you unmute yourself, and I'll repeat the question?
Oh, I remember the question. I was all ready for it. So, the most pressing issue is facing our senior community in Belvidere. So, you guys heard a lot of the same things here. A lot of them are exacerbated by COVID right now. This has magnified everything for everyone across every age group. Housing and community, I keep hearing over and over again when I speak with people, people feel lonely, and I was given so many fantastic ideas about how to incorporate community programs for seniors, not just amongst seniors, but between seniors and children. I heard some really beautiful ideas. I hope I can go into more detail tonight. But along the lines of housing, I want to touch on the fact that there are a lot of initiatives on the ballot across California this year that will directly relate and benefit seniors in Sausalito, Marin, and in Belvidere. Prop 19, property tax breaks for people who are over 55 and selling homes. This is powerful. You lose your home in a wildfire, you sell your home, you can keep your same property tax base. Prop 21, rent control, capping at 5% plus inflation. These are powerful things that we, as a community, not just our seniors, can vote for to protect their homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chelsea. And now, we'll get back on track with question number two, starting with Ian. Ian, do you need me to repeat the question?
I know, I think I got it. Thank you. I, just to say that, I thought Janelle and Erin were spot on in highlighting the ideas that need to be pursued. The notion of evacuation is first and foremost, you know, evacuation routes are one thing. There's going to be a mailer, I think, coming out imminently, according to Southern Marin Fire, with evacuation information and other preparedness information, and that's great to have. They are doing a great job, but we all know that when a wildfire comes, it can be sparked on Highway 101 in unusual locations and move quickly to cut off any of the roadways that are one-way streets. So, the idea that Erin talked about, which is preparedness and actual training is key, and using technology, there's no reason not to take advantage of 21st century methods to keep track of something like a buddy system, something like a check-in system, something that accounts for everyone, to make sure that everyone is accounted for, and allows us to act as soon as the sirens go off, not wait until we see the smoke and flames. And we can collaborate with our boat owners in the same way as Janelle's talking about, to do a Dunkirk-like mobilization of local boat owners to help provide emergency evac off the waterfront. It takes a technology initiative and purpose, and that's what we will do.
Thank you. Vicky?
Thank you. Again, I think when you're down farther in the, in the chain, some of your ideas have been expressed, so I'm glad, though, that, that the candidates in Sausalito are also interested in some of the concerns that I have. I will just confirm that in hearing a meeting of the fire safety room the other night, there is an evacuation map that is being mailed. It's in the works, I believe. As a candidate, and I think the current council will hear from councilman DeCox, I think what we really need to do is revitalize our disaster preparedness committee. It's really gone down the hill. I am familiar with Belvidere's for different reasons. They are very robust. I think we have a nice model, if we want to look at that. And in terms of climate change, just because you live up in the hills, we have flooding. Erin knows this, so this is going to impact everyone if our roads are flooded, so we've got to deal with that as well for evacuation. So, those are, I just tried to add those to the others that were already expressed.
Thank you. Melissa?
Thank you very much. And again, I'm so impressed by the group of candidates we have. Everyone is bringing up incredible points, and it's really great to hear so much coming from everyone from the forefront. I want to say I'm so proud of Sausalito Village, and it's really incredible to see a community that's third in the state and first in the county, and again, they're leading the way on these disaster preparedness efforts. They're ahead of the rest of the community with their firewise groups, and if you talk with Tricia Smith about what they've already achieved, they're well on their way, and in fact, the city could learn a lot just from spending time at their firewise meetings and following their lead and engaging more neighbors in the community to do the same thing. I would want to, like to touch on climate change a little bit, since many of us spoke specifically about disaster preparedness, and there are a lot of seniors who live on boats on the waterfront, who I've talked to and heard from, and so I think it's absolutely critical, and Belvidere for you as well, you're a waterfront community, that we do a new mapping for sea level rise, so we know who's most at risk and how we can help those people. And it's not just flooding, it's thinking about where, what their homes are going to look like and what the impacts will be. So, definitely thinking about firewise and also redundancy efforts. I was able to do a ride-along with the police and the fire, and they told me that was most important. Thank you.
Thank you. And Joan, on the phone there from Sausalito, we're going to wrap up this question with you. Joan, can you hear us? Joan? Hello, Joan? Okay, she might be where she can't hear us at this point, so we're going to move on to question three, and we'll come back if she is able to rejoin us.
She's in the waiting room. She's just texted to let me know. She needs to be rejoined.
Oh. DeeDee, can you let her back in?
She's in.
Joan, are you there?
Okay, can you, can you hear me now?
Yes. Do you want me to repeat the question? Are you good?
No, I have it in mind. Sorry about that. I was in the waiting room.
Okay.
Okay, so you raised two things. One is climate change, and one is disaster preparedness. In terms of climate change, I'm very proud that as part of our general plan process, we are creating an innovation zone that will assist us in addressing climate change and related issues, including sea level rise and subsidence. We have learned through the general plan process that we cannot address it through mitigation, we actually have to address it through adaptation. In terms of disaster preparedness, I'm very proud about a lot of the work that Sausalito Village is already doing to assist seniors in Sausalito. In March, they geomapped all 212 members and created 10 neighborhood clusters. In May, they held their first cluster captain training. In July, disaster preparedness booklets were delivered by captains to every member, and yesterday, they had their first all-cluster meeting on evacuating Sausalito during a wildfire with Tom Welch and Marshall Now of Southern Marin Fire District. So, in addition to the evacuation routes and other things that we're doing for all residents, we're paying special attention to our seniors in Sausalito. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, we're on to round three, and this time, we're going to start with Erin from Sausalito. You know what? Let me, let me take that back. Let's start, let's start with Steve Block in Belvidere. So, here's the first, the third question. Many older adults need to augment their social security with other income to remain in high-cost areas like Sausalito and Belvidere. How would you work with the business and merchant community to promote the hiring of local older adults? And again, Steve, we'll start with you.
So, I would have much rather been allowed to answer the other question having to do with sea level rise and disaster preparedness, because it's actually relevant to what we're doing at Belvidere. We have almost no retail base in Belvidere, and it's just a tiny little bit in the back of the arc parking lot, so, you know, there's not really much we can do to promote, you know, employment of seniors in a few retail areas that we've got. I'm certainly for it. I'm cer, I'm cer, I would certainly encourage, you know, that, that opportunity and to run and, and support any of their efforts, but it's really not a Belvidere City Council issue.
Thank you. And Chelsea, you'll be next.
All right, so there's multiple ways to make you money for seniors. It doesn't have to come just from retail, right? To Steve's point, we don't have much retail in Belvidere, but there's some great ideas around affordable housing that could actually help our seniors. As you all know, Newsom passed some laws recently in November 2019 about ADUs and accessible dwelling units, converting existing living spaces. Let's find a way to encourage our, our residents to build these places, our seniors who have empty homes, empty nesters, spouses who have passed. They've got empty garages, they've got space on their land. Let's find a way to help them rent and make more money. This is, this opens up affordable housing for other seniors. It brings income for those seniors. It addresses the need for community. There's so many wins from, from, from building a program and in our community, essentially having a PSA to encourage homeowners and especially seniors to take advantage of this very important proposition. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy?
Yes, I echo what Chelsea said. We've been talking about the renting of ADUs for a long time. We think of it as, in terms of a benefit to the tenants, but of course, it's also a benefit to people who may be living on fixed income. However, I have another take on this question, which is really a different perspective. What can be earned in the marketplace can be stole, can, earned in the workplace can be stolen in the marketplace, and we have a serious problem in Belvidere from financial abuse of the elderly in some cases, and, and frankly, scams that target the elderly, and they, some of these scammers target the, the senior population in Belvidere in particular. So, I would like to see a more robust communication around the issue of financial abuse of the elderly. It's not really a city council issue, but it's definitely a community issue.
Thank you. Jim?
Yes, thank you. Through my work at the Redwoods, I have a very good understanding of how we can help our seniors get out into the marketplace and to take on jobs that will supplement their income and supplement the social security, which is what I understood your question to be directed to. There's transportation requirements, but what we find, and what I have found in my own experience in the workplace, is that seniors find that working outside the home, supplementing their income, gives them that sense of purpose, which is one of the essential aspects of enjoying life and being vital in life. You need food, you need shelter, and a reason to get out of bed in the morning. We can coordinate with local businesses. As Steve points out, there are not many in Belvidere, but we can coordinate with local businesses and use transportation that's existing and perhaps can be supplemented to get seniors who are interested in working and able into the workplace and supplementing their social security.
Thank you. So, I'm trying to mix this up a little bit, so we have a little bit of variety, so you're not just all having to say the same thing, answering the same question, so I'm mixing it up a bit, but I'm keeping track. So, what we're going to do now is we're going to go to Erin in Sausalito, and we have a new question, and it is, if you are elected, how will you support implementation of your community's age-friendly plan?
Well, one of the, the things that I have always been as a businessperson and as a member of the community and working on various nonprofits and commissions is a consensus builder, and that's going to be very important, especially as we address the senior housing issue. It's going to require more consensus be built across our town to look at opportunities to create senior housing and affordable housing here in town. I would take that same consensus building to disaster preparedness and working with Southern Marin Fire District and our local police department, Sausalito Village, and other organizations, so that we can, as a town, become more prepared to respond quickly and effectively in the case of an emergency. It's obviously what we're seeing these last few years has been unprecedented, and we came very close to having that disaster here in town just three years ago, so.
Thank you, Ian. Same question, Vicky?
Yes, thank you. Well, the first thing I would do is, if I'm elected, I'll be part of the council that will be approving the general plan, or this has been proposed, so I could get it implemented that way, at least get it in our zoning. I think there's a couple of ways that we need to work on this under the various programs, certainly with help from the village, their leaders in the community. I feel like we've got a Gem in Sybil. She's knowledgeable on all the legislation and mentoring, et cetera. So, I also agree with, with Ian, with Erin, that this, as I said before, is going to be, have to be community conversations in terms of housing, these changes, and it's going to have to be, maybe, everyone won't be happy, but we have to engage the community and somehow get this moving and do the best we can for the community. It's, it's really going to be a challenge, I think, but it has to be done.
Thank you, Vicky. Melissa?
Thank you very much. I was privileged to serve alongside Janelle and Joan on the General Plan Advisory Committee, and it was thanks to Sybil that we were able to add this age-friendly language, and we really are so lucky to have someone like Sybil in our community, and she's also a part of another really important piece to implementing our age-friendly plan in Sausalito, and that's our Age Friendly Task Force. And a few years ago, our Age Friendly Task Force sent a survey to 2,400 residents in Sausalito over the age of 55. They got 1,200 responses. They need help to make that happen again, so we know that we're taking the right steps going forward and actively listening to seniors in our community. Just since the last time that survey went out, our senior population has increased by 20% in Sausalito, so we need to make sure that we are making all of those voices heard in this conversation. Got to get more people on the Age Friendly Task Force. The city has to step up and provide all of the resources continued necessary through CARS, which is a great program we have through Sausalito Village, and we have to really put Sausalito Village at the helm on this, because they know what they're talking about. They've shown that, they've proven it, and I'm so proud that they are the third in the state and the first in the county.
Thank you. Joan on the phone, can you hear us and can you join us? Joan on the phone, can you hear us and can you join us?
Yes, I can hear you and I will join you. And as mentioned by several other Sausalito candidates, we do have programs and policies that we are adopting as a part of our general plan to facilitate services for our aging. I am proud that Sausalito continues to be a leader in this forum. It's interesting, the Area Agency on Aging for Marin County actually has a number of programs to assist our aging, and I'm, I believe that Sausalito will stand behind each of those programs, which includes assisted transportation, caregiver registry, congregate meal programs, employment services, family caregiver support programs, health promotion, home-delivered meal programs, legal assistance, rural case management, senior center activities, and visiting and rural, rural visiting. And this is beyond our other priorities in terms of creating affordable housing, ensuring preparation for disaster preparedness, and in, in ensuring social inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. And Janelle?
Thank you. You know, five years ago, 27% of our older adults in Sausalito were over 60. Now it's 37%, five years later. This is something we really need to put the full force of the council behind. I'm going to try to run through six ideas that came to mind when you started talking about this. Through the general plan process, I've been actively seeking ways to promote policies that support Sausalito senior community: housing, isolation, equitable transportation, disaster preparedness. I think we need partnerships. We can't do this alone, and we shouldn't. Sausalito Village is an amazing example, has been already articulated. We need town halls. We need to provide opportunities for meaningful involvement of all residents in local governance and policymaking. We need to hear from the residents. Here's another thing about Sausalito. We have amazing, amazing intellectual capital. Let's harness that intellectual capital to solve these hard problems and to move forward together. And that means we need to integrate our seniors throughout our town, in our policies, in our land use, in our education, and in our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're going to go back to Belvedere, and we're also going to go back to the second question, so let me repeat it. In a recent survey of older adults in Marin, climate change and emergency preparedness were listed as primary concerns. What do you plan to do to help older residents in Belvedere be ready? And we'll start with Jim.
Thank you. So I, I chair our committee to protect the seawalls and utilities, and those are the two lifelines that connect Belvedere to Tiburon and to the rest of the county. We're dealing with earthquake risk, storm surges, and sea level rise. And we're developing a plan that will both shore up those roadways and elevate the seawalls to protect the entire community from, from earthquakes, storms, and climate change, sea level rise. That's one important thing. Another is our block captain initiative program is quite good. I am a block captain and have served as one for a couple of years. I think we need to bring a little more precision to that effort, so that we're identifying those in our community who have functional needs, that is, power-related or refrigeration-related, needs for medical equipment and pharmaceuticals, so that we have a plan, a very specific plan of who our most needy residents are in the event of a disaster.
Thank you. And next we will have Steve.
So I echo what Jim said about the seawall. I'm very in favor of moving forward and solving the coastal resilience and utility hearted issues we've got in the city. What I will recognize about the seawall is that as I've walked around Belvedere, I'm hearing mostly seniors, particularly seniors, who tell me they just want things to stay the, the way they are. They enjoy the view on San Rafael Avenue, they don't want to pay for the seawall. And I, and we, I think we just have to recognize those concerns as we move forward. With respect to public safety, I serve on the disaster repairs, I serve on the Belvedere Block Captain Steering Committee along with Nancy. The steering committee has recently taken a number of initiatives to reach out to seniors in Belvedere. We've gotten some help from Astrid Steger in this corps, and also, so, and to make a note of who's going to require special needs in the case of a disaster, and I think those, those efforts are going to be well, well, are going to well serve Belvedere.
Thank you. Okay. Chelsea?
Thank you. So in Belvedere, we are very lucky that we have a block captains. When I moved here a number of years ago, that was one of the first committees I took advantage of. I remember showing up with my newborn strapped to my chest for the first meeting. It's a great way to not just build community, but to ensure that there's communication amongst our, our leaders in our city and just the general populace. There's two ideas that we talked about in an earlier forum that I would love to see taken advantage, to make sure that everybody and our seniors are on board with staying safe. One is a test run. It's great to talk about this, but until we actually do it, it's going to be pretty crazy that day when it really happens. And also, I think it was Melissa, you said something about having a generator hot map. I would love to have a map for everyone in our city that when the power outages happen, or if there's an earthquake, we know where to go versus trying to stumble down to the community center. Last thing is, to Steve's point, seawall, so important, we have to talk about funding it. We're talking about finances, about affording to live in Belvedere. We have to make sure that this is feasible for everyone, especially people on fixed incomes.
Thank you. And Nancy?
Thank you. Well, I've been working night and day on disaster preparedness for the last four years, and I look forward to continuing this work. We are starting to work with the, I am starting to work with the police chief and staff to formulate new evacuation routes, both pedestrian and vehicular, and we will, in the next four years, be doing an evacuation test. It's critical that we work on communications. 250 out of the 1,100 households have someone living alone. We need to give them IT training and support those elders, seniors, who are below the digital divide. The Block Captain Steering Committee has been a part of my work since its very beginning. It's improving all the time. But as mayor, I served with Jim on the Sea Level Rise Committee, and it's really done a tremendous amount of work. I'm grateful to Jim. But I'm also on the County Baywave Executive Committee, which is beginning to look at these things from a county level, in which we really appreciate the recent grand jury report, which supports this very important work. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're going to go back to Sausalito with a new question, starting with Ian, you're going to go first on this. How will you ensure that the input of older adults is sought and included in your town's planning process and in your politics, procedures, and programs?
This is the question. I'm Ian Sobieski again, and, you know, when I first got involved in city government, it was I had a concern about an issue, so I went to a city council meeting wanting to give three-minute input. And after sitting through an hour and a half of other matters, got to give my three-minute input and never heard anything again, it felt like a dispiriting way to engage with civic government, and it wasn't an experience that felt edifying or encouraging. COVID is a horrible thing, but every cloud has some silver linings, and it's forced us to reimagine the way that we can execute government and solicit public input. And Zoom and other mechanisms like it allow people to engage in government in new ways, and I think we should explore all these ways and measure them by how successful they are, not about whether they've been done in the past or not, or about whether they step on anyone's preconceived notions of the way things should be done. We can't manage what we don't measure, and we ought to have a net consumer score, some measure of customer satisfaction with our residents, and especially our older residents as our customers, and measure them annually. Are they satisfied with the way they can engage in government? And let's continue to experiment with new policies and watch that measure of satisfaction go up.
Thank you. Vicki?
As much as I like the Zoom idea, and I think it has a lot of merit, and, and everybody's had to get familiar with this, because this is the way we're conducting business now. I like a personal approach, so I would like to come up with some ways where we engage and touch back with these groups that we deal with. I think the council, understandably, they're, they're, they're busy with their meetings. They also sit on all these other committee meetings, so it's not just a, two meetings a month. But, so this is not a criticism, but I would like to see, and if I become a member of the council, more direct communication with these other committees, be it that, that we have a date that I can come and speak with them, or they can come speak with me, in addition to the abilities to do things electronically. I think you miss something with the human touch is when it's eliminated.
Thank you. Melissa?
I really like this question, because I think it's so important as a city council member to make yourself available and really show up and listen to residents. There's a variety of ways that that can be done. Obviously, you can send surveys, and it's especially effective to mail, for instance, the survey and then offer a variety of ways to take it. You can host town halls, but as a council member, you yourself have to commit to showing up and to listening. And if I were elected to the city council, I would hold weekly office hours for our community members, so that I am always available in the same place at the same time for engagement, and anyone can ask me whatever question they may have, in addition to actively seeking out input as issues arise from partners, because partnering is equally very critical. So we have a variety of really great senior organizations that we can reach out to, but we need to be committed to those conversations and to showing up and really listening to be able to get that input effectively. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Joan on the phone, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you so much. As the only incumbent running for reelection in Sausalito, I'm very proud of my track record of being available to all residents, including our senior residents. I answer every single email that I receive, and I meet with every single person who ever requests a meeting, and I'm also available by phone. And I think that's something that I've proven in the last four years, and I will continue to make myself available. I also endorse what Ian said. I have noticed a huge increase in the attendance of residents, including seniors, at our city council meetings, now that we are conducting them by Zoom. So I do see a role for technology to play in making ourselves accessible and transparent in the tasks that we undertake by enabling seniors and all residents to provide feedback without having to sit in our council chambers for five hours at a time. Thank you.
Thank you. Janelle?
Thank you. Yeah, I think it requires a commitment to a handful of strategies that include, but aren't limited to, one-on-one conversations, growing our partnerships, and holding town halls. You know, running for city council takes a lot of energy, but I can only imagine that being a city council member takes even more energy. And so you have to be prepared for that. And one of the things that I've loved about campaigning is I immediately said to anybody who wanted to meet, let's talk one-on-one. I hold three to four Zooms a week, just to hear from residents and understand what is happening with people. I want to hear directly and form those local partnerships. And you know, I think the issues are really much more complex than they have ever been. And Sausalito deserves a city council that listens differently. We have to work together on new solutions. So I keep telling everybody, and I'll say it again, on January 8th, one month after I hopefully get sworn in, I want to host a town hall where Sausalito residents can be heard. And frankly, I hope there are so many people who want to be heard, it takes all night, and that we schedule several more, because I'm excited to listen, and it's the only way for us to work together.
Thank you. Erin, do you want to wrap up this question for Sausalito?
Sure. Thank you. Community engagement is absolutely critical to everything that we're doing in Sausalito, especially to facing the problems that are in front of us. One thing we haven't talked a lot about is the, the problems we're seeing in small businesses in Sausalito and in Marin County. In May, the Marin Economic Forum announced that 32% of small businesses had closed in Marin, and Sausalito's been particularly hit hard, and the residents are absolutely going to be critical to creating a recovery and rebuilding plan, to what we want our town to look like going forward. What kind of businesses will we support? What kind of businesses would we like to see? The town's really going to need to be engaged. We also are going to need engagement from the residents to deal with thorny issues like looking at new uses in places like the Marin ships, specifically senior housing. So we're going to need everybody involved.
Thank you. So now we're going back to Belvedere with a new question, and I'm going to start with Chelsea. Chelsea, how would you encourage more accessory dwelling units and home shares in your, in Belvedere?
I love this one. I'm super passionate about ADUs. I'm in the construction industry, I'm a construction industry executive, and all day long, our phones ring with people asking for ADUs. There is an incredible lack of knowledge about ADUs, and I think it would be absolutely beneficial for Belvedere and Sausalito, all of us, to have very detailed pages on our websites, in the planning and in the, and in the building departments about how to do this, to have, again, I said it earlier, a PSA of sorts that really simplifies a process and talks about the tangible benefits. Again, providing income to people who are looking for, you know, that opportunity, building community. There needs to be a PSA, there needs to be education about the process, how to get it done, access to loans. As you all know, construction in Southern Marin is astronomical, right? So there is a cost to doing this work. So what loans, what access can we give to our citizens, to our senior citizens, to be able to build out these units? ADUs are a huge opportunity for our community, and if done well, will be a huge win for all of us.
Thank you. Nancy?
So we have a very active program to try to reach our arena numbers by removing all of the impediments and obstacles of planning and design to the construction of ADUs. We have quite a few in Belvedere, and we need to put more creative ideas into giving incentives to get them actually rented out. And we're continuing to do that very, very actively. One of those in the past has been parking, and we're trying to work on that authority issue. We do not have short-term home shares in Belvedere, so that's not really pertinent to, to what we can do to help in this regard.
Thank you. Jim?
Yes, thank you. In my service on the Planning Commission for the last six and a half years or so, I've been intimately involved in developing the rules that implement the state requirement to expedite and incentivize the creation of JDUs and AJDUs. And we, very recently, were holding a hearing on that. We were getting ready to make a final recommendation, and on that day, the state came down with more guidance, and so we had to postpone that in order to, you know, digest that guidance and to implement it. Well, the position that we're in is it's very easy to incentivize homeowners to build these units, because there are simply very little barriers to it. There are very few subjective restrictions on it, and if someone meets the objective criteria, they can build it. I agree, and people are doing it. I agree with Nancy, we need to encourage those to be rented so that they can be used. And our big challenge is that much of Belvedere is hilly, many homes have stairs, and so the portion of our community, which seniors with some mobility challenges could use in an ADU, is somewhat limited.
Jim? Steve?
So the first thing is, is to have some transparency around actually getting an ADU approved. It's an over-the-counter process and not really subject to our, our design protections in Belvedere. But if you look at our municipal code, as amended to address this issue, there's a provision that's completely incomprehensible dealing with floor area ratios, and, and so we need to just fix that. It's a small fix. In terms of incentivizing people to actually rent these units, Jim mentioned that the other night, and I thought about it, I think, I told his folks, I think the best thing to do is, is to refund people's building and permit fees if their units are rented out, particularly to a senior or low-income person within six months, extended to a year of the, of the completion of their permit. I think that will at least help that the units become used for their intended use.
Thank you. So now we're going back to Sausalito. Thank you. So now we're going back to Sausalito, and we're going back to a question that you guys hadn't answered yet. So here's your question, starting with Vicky. Many older adults need to augment their social security with other income to remain in high-cost areas like Sausalito. How would you work with the business and merchant community to promote the hiring of local older adults? Vicky, you're muted.
Pardon me. To piggyback on the ADU issue, that is a source potentially of income for some seniors. Some have moved out of their homes, not needing a larger space, and gone into renting larger spaces. That's a slightly different question. I have experience from being on the Sausalito Historical Society Board. We provide the docents in our downtown visitor center. They get minimum wage. They're usually so knowledgeable, the seniors, that they're brilliant guides down there. So I would look for other opportunities like that, probably engage with the chamber. I think we'd have to do a little checking and see where we could use that. But I agree with the previous comment about helping people feel fulfilled with a chance to get a little bit of an additional income. I think it's a great, great way to do that.
Thank you. Next is Melissa.
Thank you. Vicky, thanks for mentioning the chamber. I'm on the Chamber of Commerce Board, and we've really been committed during the COVID pandemic to showing up for our businesses through our Love Sausalito Committee, but also just talking more to business owners. And in fact, many of our business owners in Sausalito are seniors themselves. And one of the things that I've learned from all of these conversations, and one of the things I love most about our community, is how much we really do enjoy supporting and showing up for each other. It's something we're all happy to do. We've seen it with the delivery of meals to seniors. We've seen it with folks putting up murals in the downtown just today to fill our empty storefronts. And so I really believe that if we worked with the chamber to create a partnership program where we identified the need for seniors through other partners, for instance, Sausalito Village, and said to these business owners and merchants who I've had the opportunity to get to know, hey, this senior is looking for an opportunity. Would you be willing to match with them? They would absolutely say yes, because our community is a really special one where people truly do enjoy and appreciate showing up for and supporting each other. So I would really love to help create a program like that so that we can do more to present that.
Thank you. Joan on the phone, are you with us?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Yes.
Yes. I actually have personal experience with this, as many of us do, I'm sure. My, when my grandfather retired, he did not do anything else with his life. He sort of sat in front of the television so much of his life, and I think neither he nor my grandmother found that to be very satisfying. Whereas when my father retired, he went to work first for Radio Shack and then for H&R Block, assisting with tax returns. And having that second career and staying healthy and vibrant through that, I think assisted him in living to the ripe old age of 90 years old. And so I see opportunities for us to facilitate that in Sausalito. I've been meeting with our local architect, Michael Rex, about creating senior housing in Sausalito. And we would love to include in that a mentoring program where seniors can mentor some of the 1,000 schoolchildren who attend school in Sausalito every day following school. We've all heard it takes the village, and I think that by allowing seniors to participate with our kids, we facilitate the needs of both. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Janelle?
Thank you. What a great time for us to create robust programs and policies specifically aimed at this. You know, I mentioned earlier that I've been spending a lot of time on one-on-one conversations, and every time I walk away, just amazed by the intellectual capital we have in Sausalito. We need to harness this. And I think, Jim, you said it earlier, we need to provide our older adults with a sense of purpose. In fact, we all need that, frankly. But if we can harness this intellectual capital, and we can also focus on integrating our seniors throughout our community, I think we'll find that we have some amazing opportunities. For example, I introduced the concept of an innovation zone around climate change and sea level rise. I am sure we have experts in Sausalito to inform that conversation. I've been working on education programs around apprenticeships and vocational skill sets. I'm also certain we have much knowledge here in our own community around some of those opportunities. And I think one of the other speakers just mentioned it, after-school programs. I'm working on a relationship between the Sausalito Marin City School District and the ICB Artist Association for after-school programs. We have opportunities, we just have to be creative.
Thank you. Erin?
This is one of the most important issues facing our town. Through my work as Chair of the Sausalito Chamber of Commerce and twice Chair of the Business Advisory Committee, one thing we absolutely must address is a rebuilding and recovery plan for Sausalito. We've seen 12% job losses since the beginning of this pandemic. And in the 25 years I've lived here, I've never seen so many boarded-up shuttered businesses, so many for lease town or for lease signs all over town. It's absolutely critical that we address these losses in our small businesses community and come together as, as residents and as a community to decide the future of what the small business community will look like here in Sausalito. And that's why I've created a recovery rebuilding plan that would be one of my first priorities as a city councilman.
Thank you. Ian?
Hi. We're lucky in Sausalito that a third of our businesses are in the Marinship and are the kind of industrial businesses that haven't been directly affected by the downturn in retail businesses, restaurants, and tourism. But that's just a happy accident. That's not because of a thoughtful plan about having a diverse city. We need that kind of plan for our whole community, but especially to answer this question about giving seniors the dignity of a place to work if they so chose in their local communities. There are 144,000 square feet of retail space in Caledonia, far more than many studies say that we could possibly fill if the free market is left to be unfettered. But we have no effort at city government currently to do anything like curating the kinds of businesses we have. Many landlords on EDAC, on the, on the Economic Development Advisory Committee, and I discovered that many landlords never hear from the city except for complaint. There is no proactive outreach in an attempt to curate the kinds of businesses we have here. With that kind of curation, we could bring businesses that would hire seniors as part of our goal, as well as serve the community.
Thank you, Ian. Okay, back to Belvedere, and we're going to start with Nancy. And this is a question Sausalito has answered, and now it's your turn. If, if you are elected, how will you support implementation of your community's age-friendly plan? Nancy?
I'm so sorry I had to unmute. So last month, I'm very excited about this question, actually. Last month, I convened the first meeting of the Belvedere Age Friendly Task Force. Our representative to the Commission on Aging got the WHO designation shortly before COVID, and so things kind of took a break. We've, we've convened, and we are building the task force right now as we speak. Looking at the eight domains of livability, we are going to add, we've looked at what the other communities like Sausalito and Fairfax and San Antonio are doing, we're going to add food and food delivery, technology, finance, education, and culture. And we are going to add an advocate, and I think this may be the most important of all. It goes to what we've been talking about earlier this evening, this afternoon, about communication and bringing the issues of the Age Friendly Task Force straight to city council, where I will look forward to dealing with them then. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you. I think Belvedere should be very proud of its WHO designation. It applied just two years ago and was awarded that designation. I've talked with many, many seniors around this community, including our representative to that committee and who also represents the city and county commissions. And in those conversations, in addition to the many things that Nancy mentioned, there's one thing that keeps coming up over and over again, and that has to do with, with safety and traffic and mobility. We have a traffic committee here in town that is focused on reducing speeds around blind corners, enhancing sidewalk markings, putting in traffic islands, better enforcement around sidewalk crossings, all things that are directed to making it a more comfortable, not just safer, but a place that feels safer. We have sidewalk requirements that are being implemented in our construction projects and other sidewalk initiatives on city-owned property. And so when you, when you listen to the seniors, that's one of the things that they're focused on and that I will focus on too.
Thank you. I lost track. Steve?
Well, if you look at the WHO checklist, it's interesting to note that majority of the items, the domains of habitability are really items that apply to all citizens, not just seniors. And so the effort, I think, is one that benefits both seniors and the entire community. But there are, there are a number of areas, and Jim mentioned traffic and safety as one of them, that applied particularly to, particularly to seniors. And interestingly, also to, to young children in terms of traffic. So I, I think that those areas need more attention as, as we move forward. And I'm looking, and I look forward to supporting those efforts on city council in the coming years.
Thank you. And Chelsea?
Thank you. So the study that my, my fellow candidates in Belvedere are all referencing predates a few incidents that have happened recently. Namely, we had a racially charged incident happen recently in downtown Belvedere. And we talk about in this plan about people wanting to feel safe. And we talk about it, our general plan about inclusion in diverse households and how that affects everybody in our community. And people talk loud right now. People are always banging their fists about everything that's important to them. And I think right now we'd have to be very careful about listening to everyone. The people who are going to be calling into these open forums and talking about our general plan as it pertains to seniors are not going to be the seniors. It's going to be the feisty younger people who feel that they can say, speak their mind. And all of the seniors I spoke with this week, every single one said they live in Belvedere because of the safety, and they don't want their police department dismantled. Many of them live alone. Many of them need to be protected. So as we move forward, I would just like to remember that, not to always listen to the loud voices, to listen to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're back in Sausalito, and we have a new question. How would you address problems related to aging in place at home, such as lack, such as lack of resources or energy to do home or property maintenance? And we're going to start this one with Melissa.
Great. Thank you for, for bringing, bringing this up, because right now, in particular, this is something that's definitely at the forefront as we're seeing more and more seniors filtering in place, unable to leave their homes. So it's so critical that they have the resources that they need right now. And there's a variety of things that we can be doing. We already have some great programs in Sausalito. For instance, we have Cars, which is co-funded by the city and provides resources and drives and runs errands for seniors. But there's more that we can do. We can be checking up on the homes through our planning department to make sure that they have their needs met. But also, you know, I was very proud to serve alongside Mayor Cox on her Blue Ribbon Committee on Housing. And one of the things that we push through that committee is the JADU ordinance, which allows for a fast-tracking of converting units into downstairs spaces. And if we did more to promote that program, we could get more folks in the home safely who could help seniors with some of these needs, and through a cohabitating and also providing more care. And so there's not a lot of isolation. So I think that we can rely on the programs that we have, like Cars. We can up our JADU. We consider providing more planning resources and check-ins, and of course, continue to work with our friends at the Sausalito Village. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan on the phone, can you hear us?
Yes.
Good.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, your turn.
Yes. I agree with Melissa on much of what she said. This is a very important issue for Sausalito. And indeed, our accessory dwelling unit and junior accessory dwelling unit programs are an excellent opportunity for seniors to be able to age in place. They can actually move from a larger home into a smaller home on their same property that they're already familiar with. And through the services that we already provide, including Cars, which is rides to medical and other appointments, through food, meal delivery service, through disaster preparedness pods, we are working hard to ensure that our seniors have available to them the services that they need wherever they may be cited. In addition, home sharing is another option. So while we ban short-term rentals in Sausalito, we encourage home sharing, which is an excellent opportunity to have younger folks who can assist older folks be co-located on the same site. Thank you.
Thank you. Janelle? You're muted?
I'm back. You know, I mentioned earlier that I wanted to learn more about senior issues. So I reached out to some friends at the Alzheimer's Association and at the Elder Care Alliance to develop a 10-question survey, again, available on my website. And one of the questions I asked on that survey was, if the city of Sausalito was to help local seniors with housing, which of the following would you most support? Over 51% wanted to age in place and use home modifications. Now, I get, I've spent over 10 years on the Planning Commission. I'm an environmental lawyer. I'm a land use attorney. It comes naturally to me. So I think we need to do some things, like creating a permitting liaison or a concierge, this advocate that's been mentioned, to help guide them through the process. We can streamline opportunities to age in place. We also have other programs like low-fee or no-fee home adaptation permits or non-governmental assistance programs to senior residents. I also want to give a plug for the long-term home sharing for seniors. I think it's a wonderful opportunity to provide resources and support. And I also will continue to support our ADU and JADU program as an opportunity for additional units to take care of our older adults in Sausalito.
Thank you, Janelle. Erin?
I want to echo a lot of what you've just heard, especially the work at Sausalito Village and Cars and, and programs through the Women's Club and other programs around the county that are, that are directly addressing this issue. ADUs, you know, one thing we can do is look at our permitting process and streamline it, make it more friendly, make it less expensive. That will, that will jumpstart some of the creation of these ADUs. But ADUs are not panacea, especially as some of our seniors move into a position where they need assistance. And so that brings us back to the issue of looking at assisted care, memory care facilities, which should be within the city limits here in Sausalito. So we need to open up that conversation and look at the different spots around town where we could build this type of housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ian?
I'd like to dovetail what Erin just said. I got involved with Meals on Wheels first as just a donor, because the next-door neighbor in my fourth-floor walk-up in San Francisco was a recipient. For the last three years of his life, the only two people he ever saw was me and the Meals on Wheels volunteer. It was a great service to him, but in many ways, he was also trapped by the circumstance that he couldn't afford to live anywhere else. He was trapped on his fourth-floor walk-up for the last three years of his life because of a lack of affordable options. I think it should be a moral goal of us to our neighbors who have lived their whole lives in Sausalito, to give them a choice of aging in place or choosing to age in the place they consider their hometown, even if it's a few blocks away from where they lived their entire lives. It's a big challenge, and it requires bringing together people that are opposed to something happening in their neighborhood. I don't think that's a concern that's easily, easily dismissed. It has to be fully engaged with. But I think it's a challenge we should all step up to and try to decide upon. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicky?
So every topic that I had in my notes has been covered. I will expand on Ian's comments, though, and say that our Planning Commission meeting last night, we talked about residential care facilities for six people. These are regulated by the state. There's an opportunity, if someone, for instance, has left a larger home, an empty nestor, gone into their ADU, which we have many in Sausalito. We've been using this program for a long time and have had amnesty. It's been quite successful. But the larger home could be used as, as these types of facilities. They're in existing neighborhoods. They're not isolated. They could have the help of whoever's in the ADU, or at least someone checking in on them. That's one idea. We also We also, through the village, talking about intellectual memory, all of these great ideas that have been mentioned have come out of a couple of people that founded the village, knowing about these programs. I particularly liked the home sharing one. It's worked out really well. So it's great. Thank you.
Ian has a commitment he needs to meet. So we're gonna just take a moment. Ian, you have one minute to give your closing statement and you will move on to the last question.
Okay. Thanks a lot for accommodating me. I had a commitment here at the scheduled end of this session. I thought Vicki's addition, additional idea is great. All ideas should be on the table. I'm running to actually make things happen. I think that our, as Janelle mentioned and others, our town is full of intellectual capital. I am so impressed by the quality of all the people who volunteer at all the different committees and commissions, all the people that run for what's essentially a volunteer service on the city council. Incredible people. And yet, there seems to be a lot of conflict, a lot of mistrust about choosing to make some of these projects actually happen. Our progress has been good, but incremental. And I think it can just be a lot better. And part of that, I think, is, is why I'm running. I don't think I have any magic answers for it. But in my career of working with hundreds of companies, I've never been in a position to tell anyone what to do. I've always had to collaborate to make progress towards common goals. And I think I have some aptitude for it. I bring my financial acumen and my experience with budgets to try to deal with our near-term crises. But I bring my poet's heart towards the values of Sausalito. And I look forward to serving you if you think I should join the team of other members of the council. Thank you for your time and enjoy the rest of tonight's session. Good night.
Thank you, Ian. And so now we're going to go back to Belvedere. And this is a question Sausalito answered earlier. And we're going to start with Jim. How will you ensure that the input of older adults is sought and included in your town's planning process and in your policies, procedures, and programs?
Well, Belvedere has an amazing, wonderful tradition of involving seniors in all of these kinds of planning and committee processes. Partly, that's a virtue of, or a cause of the fact that some one-third of all of our population is over 65s. You can't really assemble a committee that supports our governmental efforts and our planning process without involving a lot of seniors. The, the, the main thing that we need to do is to encourage, to continue to encourage our seniors to stay involved. And we need to help them be heard and feel heard. It's not just enough that we continue to solicit their input, continue to get their involvement in our government. We need to make sure that, that they're being heard. And in my discussions with, with folks around town, in the senior community, that's part of what is missing a little bit. They feel like they report concerns to City Hall and then it doesn't really get acted upon or there isn't any feeling that it's been heard and acted upon. And I think that is one of our key solutions.
Thank you. Steve?
I'll echo what Jim said about the great spirit of community involvement in Belvedere. We've got eight standing committees that advise the city council. And I am not aware of any of them that don't have a significant representation of seniors. But Jim makes a good point. There's, there's also the issue of responsiveness of city government. And I've been in conversations lately with some members of the community about maybe fostering improvement in the city's contact management and workflow processes. It seems like the city's very responsive to the last email or to a council member or mayor who then goes to the city manager and says, somebody's complaining about this. And what doesn't happen is that there's not a good system for prioritizing what's going on in terms of city work and, and a 360 visibility to those priorities. And so I think that kind of system will serve the city very well.
Okay. Let's see. And now Nancy?
Thank you very much. So during COVID, we did have to go on very reduced staffing of about, and, and most people were working remotely. And there were some issues of people not being able to get to City Hall. Every single message that has come through email to me and over the website, I have conveyed, I have responded to and conveyed to City Hall. And once I got involved, then the result did come. I have brought more than 60 new people into volunteer positions in the last four years. We have over 100 volunteers. And we're adding an element of livability to the age-friendly program called Advocacy. And that is one more way that this age group can come to City Hall. I think there are ways that we can do better and I'm fully engaged in, in improving that process.
Thank you. Back Sausalito. And this is a question that we asked Belvedere earlier.
Excuse me, Nancy. This is DeeDee. Chelsea needs to go. Could you please give her the last question, this question and her closing comments?
Okay. So Chelsea? So your question, your last question is, how would you address problems related to aging in place at home, such as lack of resources or energy to do home or property maintenance?
Marin County is expensive. Belvedere is expensive. Doing home upgrades are expensive. So we, as a community, need to support folks who want to stay home and want to make improvements to their home. One of my fellow candidates had a great, I think it was Steve, a great best idea heard all night about incentivizing people to do repairs or ADUs by maybe allowing a credit or refund of permit fees. I think that'd be a great idea for folks who are struggling financially but need to make improvements to their home, to offer that to them. Another thing too, I've seen in Belvedere, and I've been talking to a lot of people, there's tremendous frustration with our planning department. Sometimes they feel like the rules are too stringent. And sometimes when they want to do a basic upgrade to their home, the mandates that are triggered when you try to do that basic improvement are such that they can't even afford it anymore. So I would love to bring a voice to those citizens who feel that there's a bit of an overreach when it's a simple ask. Communication goes so far. Belvedere is a fantastic place. And if we can listen and find consensus, I think that we will win. Everyone will. Thank you.
Okay. And did you want to do a one-minute closing statement?
I do. I gotta go get the kiddos. Thank you. So in closing, I'm educated on the issues. I know it faces Belvedere across all age groups. Yes, I'm a mom. I'm a working mom. I've got young kids ages two, eight, and 10. And I know where I have a knowledge gap and I work hard to get, to bridge it. And I think you saw that tonight. I'm hardworking. I'm passionate about serving everyone in our city and I've got a ton of energy. If I'm elected, I will be representative of everyone in Belvedere, regardless of skin color, sex, income level, age, everything. I want to continue to work, work together to foster community engagement across all age group. I want to promote diversity and inclusion. I want to make sure that we can make it possible for people to, as a city council, make prudent financial decisions so it's somewhat affordable to keep staying in the city. Belvedere is a fountain of youth. I figured out the day I moved here. So I plan to live here forever and a day. I don't know if it's walking the hills or that sea breeze, but I'm grateful for this opportunity to run. I know I'm different than all of you running against me. I'm fully aware of it. But I'm grateful for this opportunity and I hope I have a chance to serve come November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for participating. So let's go back to Sausalito and we're going to start with Joan on the phone. Joan, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. So here is the question. How would you encourage more accessory dwelling units and home shares in Sausalito?
Well, this is a great question for me because when I was on the Planning Commission, Sausalito actually banned accessory dwelling units. And through my work on the Housing Committee, we not only removed the ban, we started encouraging them by enacting an amnesty program. When the state of California enacted regulations allowing larger ADUs than we had contemplated, we then adopted the junior ADU program to ensure that our ADUs in Sausalito contained an element of affordability. Currently, I'm working with Senator Mike McGuire to identify grant monies to encourage the construction of ADUs and junior ADUs in Sausalito. The city of San Mateo actually has a template for how to construct an ADU. And so our Community Development Director is working on a similar template to ensure that it is easier for our residents who are interested to permit and construct their ADUs. It's critical to meet our affordable housing needs and to allow our seniors to age in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Janelle?
So I keep mentioning this survey because I, obviously, I'm really excited about it. I want to mention that over 60% of the older adults that responded to it want affordable housing. That's what they're looking for. And so these JADUs and the ADUs provide an amazing opportunity to achieve that. As a planning commissioner, I have taken a long, hard look at the ADU and JADU opportunity. I understand what it takes from a regulatory perspective, from a state mandate perspective. And I think it's something that could really enhance our community here. I also have a strong background in green building and design. And I think this fits right into the commitments we made in the general plan around sustainability. Because there's a whole industry emerging around prefab ADUs. And these things can go up quickly with minimal impact on the environment with built-out solar panels. And so I actually want to link the two. I think we provide affordable housing that can be constructed quickly, that has lower emissions and renewable energy sources. It's a wonderful opportunity and I'll continue to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron?
One of the little known facts about myself is I actually have a master's degree in architecture. And so I wanted to echo what Janelle just said. I think prefab ADUs are a huge opportunity for us. But back to a policy, from a policy standpoint, it goes back to planning and permitting. I think we need to make the process much simpler and more streamlined. I think we need to provide very clear goalposts for people and not move them as they're going through the, the planning and permitting process. And we also need to make permitting much more affordable. I think we would see a larger effort to create these ADUs if the permitting process were a lot less expensive. And, you know, dealing with some of these issues with permitting also would address some of our problems in the small business community who are having some of the same issues.
Thank you. Vicki?
I first want to applaud Councilmember Cox because she really is the way and the person that has led the way for our success with ADU programs in Sausalito. She really did take a lead on that. But I also would want to say that ADUs are not the only solution, solution for housing. We have, we've been successful with our ADUs. Our RENA numbers, I believe, are satisfied with them. But to get back to all different types of housing, I've been, was at a conference in Sonoma after the fire several years ago, planning conference. And there were a very variety of housing solutions mentioned because you had whole canvases of neighborhoods that were gone. If I'm on the council, when we start this housing conversation, we're going to look at everything. Tiny houses, prefab. I want to look at everything and I want the community to weigh in and see what we can do, where we can do it, and what the support is. So a robust housing program.
Thank you. Melissa?
Thanks for that, Vicki. That's a great segue into what I wanted to say, which is that we have plenty of resources for the build. We've got these prefabs. We've got really interesting tiny homes. There's a lot of ways to do that. The problem isn't the build. The problem is the permitting and it makes people not be incentivized to build in their home. So first, we need to do more to make the permitting process. We live in Silicon Valley, essentially. Why can't we make digital tools easier so that for the APUs and JADUs, it's an online process? It's a checkbox. I've talked with our Community Development Director about how we can improve this planning process and make it as easy and seamless from the online side as possible. But there are people who still don't want to build here. So we need to incentivize them. And on Mayor Joan Cox's Blue Ribbon Committee on Housing, we push for, and I still hope to see, an impact assessment for new builds. So if you have a huge McMansion lot and you're unwilling to put an ADU there or to consider an ADU, you're going to be charged a fee. Because the reality is, we need every affordable unit that we can have in our community. So we need to incentivize these units from a planning perspective. And then once they're built, we need to get the right folks in there and make sure that seniors have that opportunity.
Thank you. And now we're going to go back to Belvedere and continue with the question that Chelsea was answering before she left. And let me repeat that. And Nancy will be first. How would you address problems related to aging in place at home, such as lack of resources or energy to do home or property maintenance?
Thank you. So I think walkability and traffic safety is number one here. I remember when my mother, I had to leave her home. It was because she couldn't walk to town. It was not in, it was not here, it was in Santa Barbara. But it was basically the same idea. We want every single person in Belvedere to be able to walk downtown. And we're less than a square mile. And I think that's really doable. Three years ago, I started our summer paid intern program and she mapped the entire community so that we could move ahead with our traffic safety committee. That is a work in progress and they're doing great. Safety is number two. Our block captain program is going to help people age in place. And ultimately, affordable housing in Marin will help, and, and in Belvedere, will help Belvedere residents age in place as, as they can get help from their families and others.
Thank you, Nancy. Jim?
Yes, thank you. So I'm very familiar with the aging in place phenomena and the wave that we're seeing from my work at the Redwoods. We obviously study it very closely because we appreciate that, that the vast majority of seniors now prefer to age in place. And we're seeing people coming to the Redwoods at later stages of life than has occurred in previous decades. So how do you make it easier to do that, including home maintenance and yard maintenance? There's a couple of things. Aging in place doesn't inherently mean you're staying exactly where you are. You can get into a similar place. What we hear is that aging in place means not having to go to the, the Redwoods, essentially, or a place like it. So affordable units is great. The Village Movement, which is obviously a big effort to get resources in the community to help our seniors take care of themselves with, with food, with home maintenance, with yard work and so forth, that is a movement that is really getting off the ground and it has a lot of, I think, promise. And that's, those are the things that I would focus on, on city council.
Thank you. Let's see, Jim. So last of all, the final question, the final candidate, Steve?
Hi. I, I echo Jim's thoughts about the Village Movement. I think it's a very interesting, important phenomenon. And I, I serve on the Belvedere Black, I mean, on this Belvedere Community Foundation. And we just provided a significant grant to the villages here in Marin for their work. I, I think it's really a positive thing. I think that we should be refunding or reducing fees for remodels related to ADA kitchens and bathrooms. And in terms of, I hadn't really thought about the issues surrounding property maintenance before. And I, I just have to, I just have to say, I draw a blank as to, as to how we can help with that. But, but I, if the, if the questioner wants to go to info@steveblockforbelvedere.org, I'd like to hear more about the question and learn more about what we can, and think more about what we can do.
Great. Thank you. Well, that concludes the question portion of the forum. Before the candidates make their closing statements, I would like to share some key differences about how our elections will work this year, particularly in regards to how and when you can vote. November 3rd is Election Day. You have until October 19th to register, after which you will have to go to the elections office to register and vote in person. Due to COVID-19, the state of California has implemented new, broader voting opportunities in order to promote public safety, providing expanded vote-by-mail options as well as in-person voting. Slide four, please. Vote-by-mail ballots will be mailed next Monday, October 5th. All active registered voters in Marin County will automatically receive a ballot in the mail. All active registered voters in Marin County will automatically receive a ballot in the mail. There is no need to request one. You can start voting by mail on October 6th by dropping off your completed ballot at any one of 12 secure drop boxes located around the county, or at the Elections Office in the Civic Center, or at a US Post Office. To be counted, returned ballots must be postmarked no later than November 3rd and received at the Elections Office no later than November 20th. Please note that Marin County pays the postage for all returned ballots. Slide five, please. Polling places will be open for four days, October 31st through November 3rd. There will be 29 consolidated polling places. Your ballot will indicate your assigned polling location. You can vote at the Elections Department in the Civic Center starting October 6th during regular business hours. For more information about Dropbox and polling locations, go to www.marinvotes.org. Thank you. At the end of this forum, there will be a slide listing several additional websites we recommend you check out for more detailed election information. And now the candidates will make closing statements of one minute. We will go in reverse order of the opening statements, starting with Steve Block.
Well, I want to again thank the Aging Action Initiative and the League for hosting this important forum. It's been a good opportunity for me to learn more about the issues surrounding our seniors. I hope that, that tonight's given you a sense about who I am and how I approach my, my role on City Council. I hope you leave tonight knowing that I'll always work to bring Belvedere together and, and to act constructively and be a constructive voice. In voting for me, you can take some comfort in more than 200 public office holders and leading citizens of Belvedere who already endorse the campaign. If you want to learn more about the campaign and maybe pitch in to help make Belvedere, give Belvedere a stronger and more resilient future, please go to steveblockforbelvedere.org or follow us at facebook.com/steveblockforbelvedere. Thanks again, be safe and be well. Good night.
Jim, your closing statement.
Thank you. And I also want to thank the League for hosting this tonight and the Aging Action Initiative. I'm very excited about the prospect of being able to continue to serve Belvedere on City Council. I have significant experience serving this community on planning, on our C-Wall Committee, which addressed some of the most important and difficult issues that we as a community face. I also look forward to leveraging the expertise that I've gained and deployed as President of the Board at the Redwoods about the senior community, how to best serve them, understanding the trends that we're facing, and what that implies for how we best serve the senior community in Belvedere. I want to thank you again for this very helpful forum, and I would appreciate your vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy.
My experience in the last four years has revealed to me not just the number of seniors in Belvedere, which is nearly half of us, but the value this demographic brings to just about everything else the council does. And in the last four years, I have come of age. I have, we have to remember, most seniors don't think of themselves as being old. I'm a baby boomer, and I can tell you, we don't even trust anyone over 30. This conversation should begin and end with respect. Whenever we invest in social infrastructure, that is the way we bring members of the community together, we all benefit. We've heard a lot of great ideas tonight, but it's not enough to know what you want to do. You need to know how to do it. And that's why you need, we need one incumbent to remain on the council. And I would do that in order to help every other council member succeed. You can learn more at www.kimnitzer4, roman numeral four, belvedere.com. Thank you.
Thank you. And back to Sausalito. Vicky, do you want to do your closing?
I want to thank the League of Women Voters and also the Aging Action, Aging Action Initiative. As I mentioned earlier, I've been in the Sausalito community a long time. I've known my neighbors for a long time. One of the things I pride myself on is I've been able to work with people that we've been on opposing sides of issues, and some of them, I consider them a good friend at the moment. So I pledge to work with the community for community goals. I'm a hard worker, I honor my commitments. If I tell you I'm going to do it, it'll get done. And I'm happy to say that I've been endorsed by the International Firefighters of 1775, Marin Women's Political Action Committee, Democratic Central Committee, Marin County Young Democrats, the North Bay Labor Council, and Congressman Huffman, and Senator McGuire. So I'm very pleased and with their support and the support of the community. I hope to be your next, one of your next council members. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Vicky. Erin.
Well, thank you very much, Nancy, and thanks to the Aging Action Initiative and to the League for this terrific event. I'll leave you with three reasons why I think you should give me one of your votes for Sausalito City Council. One, I have the experience needed, especially as a multi-company business owner here in town, as well as over two decades of experience working with the city and working with local nonprofits. I'm a problem solver, and I've already worked on some of our town's thorniest issues, including working with Una Kavanaugh, the great Una Kavanaugh, and the Chamber of Commerce on the first plan to deal with bike congestion in town, most of which is still in place today. And finally, I'm a consensus builder. We have a lot of big issues in front of us here in Sausalito, and, and building consensus between our residents and the rest of town is going to be important. So please visit singerforSausalito.com to learn more about me.
Thank you. Janelle.
Thank you, League of Women Voters and Aging Action Initiative. I really learned so much from all the candidates tonight. It's absolutely clear, we need to continue supporting the city senior community as part of our commitment to social equity, diversity, and racial justice. And this dedicate, this dedication to that includes providing opportunities for meaningful involvement in policymaking. It involves outreach to Sausalito's older residents. It involves providing this as an essential part of our vision. And as somebody recently said, in fact, last night on our Planning Commission, they said that a city that considers what is good for its elders is a city that is good for everybody. We need to continue to integrate our seniors and harness that intellectual capital. As a longtime planning commissioner, I know we have a wide range of options for housing. I also know we have the opportunity to provide a sense of purpose through community programs and education. I have the knowledge and experience to make sure every one of the outcomes we discussed tonight can be aired in a collaborative conversation, and we can learn from one another. But we need to start together now. Thank you so much, and have a great night.
Thank you, Janelle. And next is Joan on the phone. Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, this is your closing statement.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and to the Aging Action Initiative for hosting this forum. It's been very informative for all involved. And thank you to all of those who listened to what we had to say. I have been a resident of Sausalito for 35 years. I've been in public service at Sausalito for 12 years. I've been privileged to serve on many committees that prioritize the needs of our aging in Sausalito, including the Housing Element Committee, the Planning Commission, the General Plan Advisory Committee, and of course, the City Council. With our city manager announcing his retirement at the last year, I am the only incumbent running for office, and it will be important to maintain continuity, both in terms of collaboration with our regional partners, but also in terms of maintaining momentum in some of the great programs that we're moving forward right now. You can find out more about me at my website, joancoxforcitycouncil.com. And thank you, I appreciate your vote.
Thank you, Joan. Melissa, last but not least, you get to sit down.
Great, thank you so much to the League of Women Voters and the Aging Action Initiative for this fantastic, informative forum. And you know, one, one thing that was clear to me is we heard about three really important issues for seniors. We heard about housing, we heard about disaster preparedness, and we heard about economic opportunity. And when I hear those three things, what I think is, those are critical for seniors, but those are critical for all of us. And if this forum has been anything for all of these candidates, I think it's probably been a reminder of just how much we are all connected and how critical seniors' needs are to the needs of our entire community and to the needs of a thriving community. I'm committed to a healthy future for Sausalito and to making an impact and to solve our biggest problems. It's really going to take broad-based coalition building, and I've proven I can do that. I've been part of the Chamber of Commerce Board, Vice Chair of the Sustainability Commission, the General Plan Advisory Committee, the Blue Ribbon Committee on Housing, and I'm a proud member of the Sausalito Historical Society. But I've also been endorsed by a broad coalition, including Senator Mike McGuire, Assembly Member Mark Levine, the Democratic Party, Marin Women's Political Action Committee, and the folks I'm thinking about the most tonight, which is our Marin Firefighters Association. I really appreciate the time and consideration for all of the candidates this evening. I would be honored to have your vote. You can learn more about me at melissaforSausalito.org. Thanks so much, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you. So that concludes our, concludes our forum. Again, we would like to thank the Community Outreach Partners, Marin Villages, Sausalito Village, Marin County Commission on Aging, and Age Friendly Marin. Thank you to the candidates for participating. It's been a long evening, so thank you. It's hard with 10 candidates to cut it short because you all want your time. And Robin doing a great job on the clock. She's been busy watching that timer all day. And DeeDee and Anne Wakely in the background doing Zoom support. Thank you so much. And special thanks to the team at CMCTV. We could not have done this without them. A video of tonight's forum will be posted on the League's website in the next few days. Slide six, please. For more information about the election, the candidates, and ballot measures, visit the League's website at marinlwv.org and click on the Voters Edge logo. Here are some additional recommended websites. Thank you. Thank you again for joining us tonight, and most importantly, for voting.